Okay, uh, we are a go here, roll call.
Don's not very good.
I don't have authority, but.
Rod.
Here.
Colazo.
Here.
Advisor.
Here.
Rick. Lancaster. Newell.
Here.
Sernissa. Here. Smith. Here. Six present, two absent.
Right, uh, no public, moving on, okay. A new business, the whole reason we're here tonight is to discuss what may or may not be actually taking place on Thursday. Um, I sent out, did everyone get a chance to read the email I sent from the commissioner?
Yeah, sorry, just over there.
Okay, and then hopefully Mr. Mayor going along with whatever information was in that email may have some more information, hopefully. Of his many meetings in the last twenty-four hours.
Well, actually in the last two years, to be honest with you, that's how long it's been going.
Well, yeah, well, hopefully there's something new in the last twenty-four hours, though, that would.
I, I, I'm sorry I didn't see your email because of my meetings, I wasn't in the office today, so.
Well, I can, would you like me to recap it since I've mentioned it?
Sure, go ahead.
When did they introduce this two years ago?
Well, yeah, well, basically what he said, well, because I asked him the questions of how much we're trying to raise. And then, once we raised it to the best of our ability, what are, what is the breakdown? And what are we doing with this?
Okay.
Yeah, and then the gist of it was, he wanted, he, he suggested that they wanted to. One, okay, one thing I will say about the email he mentioned is, it's the only countywide authority, Lancaster wasn't countywide, right? Now, this one is countywide.
Hey, John? Tried to go countywide, but not everybody participating.
Sure, and so we're attempting to go countywide today, or today, this without. And so, there's an unprecedented, literally, no one's ever done it before. So, there's a, he's, he basically pointed out how there's a large learning curve, and there isn't anyone else to go off of, and so we're. Essentially, the committee and all the folks involved with this have basically made something out of nothing, which is a hard, challenging thing to do. You're gonna be facing a lot of people who are gonna be upset, one way or the other. When you do stuff like that, and then he, then he basically stated that their goal was to aim for a. It sounded like a relatively small one, he only mentioned households at a hundred dollars apiece, that was the only thing he mentioned in the email.
That's because he doesn't know the other.
Yeah.
If you, I'll go ahead and start.
That's fine, if you want to take it away, please.
Uh, first off, the meeting, uh, joint special meeting is Jan- uh, January thirtieth, which is Thursday.
Yep.
It starts at seven o'clock, they ask if you'd be there early, so you can, uh, keep that in mind. But basically, the authority was, uh, brought to us, say, citizens ambulance, for future funding. Because of the fact that it, if you look around, not only Pennsylvania, but the country, ambulances have a hard time, you know, beating their goals because of reimbursements of only fifty percent from insurance companies, and there are a lot of calls that they make where they don't get anything if they don't transport. And, uh, so there's a lot of reasons why it needs funding. But, the thing was, our ambulance system, in my opinion, is a good one. It, it does, it does a good job, it's been around for a long time, uh, and, well, actually, it's been around for sixty years. Sixty-one years ago, I got hit by a car, and the ambulance came and it was a hearse, and that took me to the hospital, so the next year, they said, you know what, we probably ought to get some ambulance. So, anyway, that's, that's what, uh, had taken place. So, they've been coming and talking about the hundred dollars, the household type thing, and then I go in and I say, well, wait a minute, that's not that simple in Indiana Borough, because we have, we have the university, we have, uh, student housing, uh, we, businesses, how are we gonna charge all this? Well, we'll figure that out once you pass the ordinance. No, people wanna know the price now. And so, I went, and last night, I got into it pretty good with these folks, and, and I'm gonna tell you why. Uh, the ordinance, so I'm gonna tell you, the ordinance signifying the intention and desire of the council of this borough to delegate the provision of emergency medical services within this borough to an authority we incorporated under the Pennsylvania municipal authorities. Now, the thing was, we've always, we've been looking for future funding, what this is saying is that the, uh, the authority will be coming in and taking over administrative services. So, in other words, they're gonna move the board of directors that I've been on for years, uh, citizens aside, and they're gonna run citizens from this board. Uh, and we don't even know who that is yet, but there'll be people that'll be paid, and so there'll be dollars going out to, uh, administrative people before money goes to the ambulance service.
Is that accurate, Bill, that they're gonna pay the board?
I just think, I just hear that.
I heard they're only gonna pay an executive director and staff, not a board.
Staff, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, you're right, staff. It says it will improve the quality of life of its residents. And, you know, I think, well, I mean, we have good quality of life, now, uh, they request, uh, appraising the authority's delivery of emergency medical services. And what this, what they'll be allowed to do is by taking over administratively, they also will be able to take over citizens' assets, i.e. their, uh, ambulances, buildings. And, and I questioned that on that last night, and the attorney said, well, yeah, we can do this, but I said, how can you do that? And he gave me some kind of a article, whatever, and, uh, but he said, we're not gonna do that. Well, we found out today, they've already done that, Lancaster County, they've taken over a couple buildings through eminent domain or something along that line.
Was it a peaceful?
No, this is turning into what really would be considered a hostile takeover. And they could also have the employees then working from the authority instead of from citizens. And they, the kids, they, the kids, the employees there say they don't wanna work for them, but fundraising. They had said that they were going to, we, a hundred dollars a, a household. Um, you've gotta remember that citizen shortfall is two point two million. That, if they had that, they would be fine. They're trying to raise six point six million. Why?
Right, so this is, this is where I get a lot of confusion. Where is six point six coming from? Like, who, no one I've talked to has said that.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-three thousand households.
Uh-huh.
In the county.
And this is from the meeting last night, or something?
Oh, no, this has been going on, this, this.
Is Michael Keith at those meetings?
Yeah. So, uh, and, and we have thirty-eight municipalities in the county that were then donating a hundred dollars apiece, or taxed a hundred dollars apiece, could raise that money, but three have already dropped out. One already said no, and then two dropped out last night.
Johnstown, no, uh, our, Johnstown, they, are they the middle? Or, or.
Our mall's off the border with Cambria County.
Okay, yeah, and I think they're, they, I don't know what they're doing, doesn't matter, they're, they're just, they don't wanna be involved in this.
So, they're all three, you said there was thirty-three thousand households, is that the number you put?
So, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, plus, whatever they're gonna charge.
Well, and then you gotta look into businesses, Betsy, at our last meeting, she brought that website up.
Yeah.
To show that what to recharge, what they were charging other places, and so I went out and looked at it again. Uh, assisted living units, four hundred and sixty dollars a bed, uh, they, resident students, fifteen dollars a head, so that's times nine thousand. You know, right now, uh, IUP's contributing thirty thousand dollars a year, so, uh, that would be more that they would have to pay. They have to pay for event venues, believe it or not, uh, acute nursing beds, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. And, uh, the number of full-time employees, like an S and T bank, would pay ten dollars a employee.
So, my, so who is they, the consultant?
They for what?
Wait, who saying they would pay, who is they?
They business, that's, in businesses.
In Lancaster County.
Yeah, that's what they're using in Lancaster County, yeah.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that's what will happen.
Nope.
What is our average income here versus average income in Lancaster, do we know that?
Low.
We pick at my last.
Very significant. And that's what they're charging them, yes.
Uh, medium, but like we still have fifty percent in Alice's admission.
That's true, that's fair.
So, if you picture the, the things that they could do, the, you pass this ordinance, and what it says right at the end, it, as you pass it, is, uh, I wanna read it. Bear with me, just, I've been going over this stuff so much, it's driving me crazy. Sorry. Motion, to enact the ordinance delegating the administration of EMS to a county-created authority on a mutually agreeable date. So, there it is, delegating the administration of EMS to a county-created authority. So, that means they come in and they take over.
Right. So. According to this, there's a set argument for me, so.
All the, the, the.
Yes.
As, as, by the authority.
Right, but.
Yeah, and if you object, you're out.
Then the board of the authority.
Well, you can, I mean, if you're a member of that, you talk to your delegate.
Right.
And if they, if the delegate puts pressure on the board to say, hey, we gotta bring that fee down, or up, or whatever.
Yeah.
And that's how government works.
Who decides to? One of the things that I'm, like, I, I get how government works, and how, in my mind, how it should work in an equitable process, way. One of the things that I'm really, like, I don't understand is, we have a responsibility to, like, a whole bunch of people, right? And we've never seen the organizational structure, like, I know you're our delegate, and you're doing a great job taking care of that, and you're there for all the information. But I would think that they would want us to understand the organizational structure and the guidelines and the process they're going to be going through if they want our residents' money.
Well, that's right, so here's.
If I could invest in something substantially, like, I wanna know, what's your, your start plan? Like, what's your strategic plan moving forward, and what's your organizational structure?
Can I ask Pat a quick question on that? Because in the email from Michael Keith, he said, pass the ordinance, then establish the bylaws in the article, right?
That's what I was.
Now, is this how it's done?
I mean, it can't.
This doesn't.
There's no bylaws, but it doesn't exist.
Here's the issue. Go ahead, Bill, what was your question?
Well, I want Pat to answer that question, because of the fact that this is so brand-new.
Right.
They're just limping along, and then.
To me, it feels like they're building the plane in the air.
Okay, but now, you're right, who, I hate to say this, you're, you're an elderly gentleman in the room, were you around for the sewer?
Peter.
I didn't say Peter, I wasn't looking at him, but, but, for the other authorities that exist.
Yeah.
What was the, for the solid waste authority, how did it, how was it created?
Well, that was a little different, because you, I mean, we didn't have to agree on recycling, and there was a.
The Act, whatever, Act nine, whatever, there was a.
Was that, boom, there was an authority, like, the next day?
Yeah, because the state, you had, the state mandated us to recycle and.
Okay.
Funds.
Yeah.
Created it with.
Yeah.
Here, look, the.
We've got a problem.
The ultimate, here, here's the question that you have to answer. Bill, if citizens shuts its doors, what happens?
Well, that's a good question, so you take, uh, Life, LifeStat in Salzburg.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago, they shut their doors.
Right.
They took care of that end of the county, mostly Salzburg, and so, uh, mutual aid started to come up from Westmoreland County.
Right.
To help out, but citizens is also helping out, but like, they had a call last week that if LifeStat was still around, they would've been there in less than ten minutes, citizens had took twenty, because of the fact they're here.
They're farther away, right.
It's a lot further to go, so what you're gonna open yourself up to is longer, oh, first off, we, we definitely wanna have a ambulance service, but if you don't, you've gotta rely on somebody that's the next closest.
And I would even love having enough money to buy that other service, you know, or buy the one in the north, you know, so that we could have some partnerships, it's just.
But the problem is, there's no, because I talked to Senator Pittman about this, there's no end to jurisdiction, it's all distance.
Well.
If we're the closest, we have to go, we being.
When nine-one-one gets a call, the closest, uh, ambulance service has to go.
Yeah.
So, to answer the idea of all the municipalities joining this ordinance, or a couple of them saying, no, we're not gonna do it. And then they don't pay anything, they have a call, citizen still has to go.
And that's the problem.
And then they, I'm sorry, then they send a, a bill to the municipality, municipality sends it to the person, and LifeStat went out of business because people never paid that.
And this is the problem, even if this doesn't go through, and we establish an authority as Indiana Borough, White Township, whatever conglomerate of people agreed, the next community over that didn't agree and isn't chipping in, still will be serviced by whatever we'll call it, Innocence Ambulance, right? Indiana's ambulance, right, they'll still be, that's my understanding of the law.
Well, that's the way it is, yeah.
Just because, if Indiana Borough had your own dedicated ambulance service.
Yeah.
And we said, we're paying the bill. We're gonna own the trucks, we're gonna do it all, but a call comes in White Township, they gotta go.
Yep.
Call goes at Marion Center, if they're the closest, they gotta go.
See, in the fire department, it's mutual aid.
Right.
Whenever they need help in other areas, we go, and we don't charge anything, because we're volunteering, we wouldn't do that. But yes, that's the thing, that you have to understand.
Have you heard what the catalyst was for this to come to be?
Yeah.
Citizens going out of business.
But who is not going out of?
No, 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 I'm not saying that, but that was the threat.
Citizens has been coming to us.
Citizens coming every year.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is.
Saying the deficit is growing, the deficit is growing.
I heard.
So, that's why the county started this.
Go ahead.
Well, I heard a rumor that there were some disgruntled ex-citizens employees that found fault and thought, we have to bring competition for this, they can't be a monopoly, types of things, that's what I'm saying, have you heard the catalyst, the target, why we are being targeted?
It's not, we're not targeted.
It's not, that's, that's not even close.
Uh, and our job is not to preserve citizens, like, our job is.
To provide.
Your job is to make sure that you have ambulance service in your municipality the most cost-effective way for the citizens.
And logically, logically speaking, would be with it.
Citizens have been coming to us for quite some time, and a lot of the times, they didn't wanna provide us their full financial documentation, it's only recently that they were willing to do that, and then we gave them funds. Because for the longest time, I mean, Peter could have asked, they just wouldn't. Like, we had a report from the fire, we, we did not, they would not reveal all of their finances to us.
Well, that, that was a big mistake, there's no question about that.
And that's because they're retired, right?
Yeah, and we, what we've done, there was a, ASMC was the company that they called For Profit.
Mm-hmm.
And they were the ones that had all the employees, we dissolved that at the end of the past year, so now ASMC is gone, and citizens is a five oh one C three, pure nonprofit, okay, so that, that's been.
And it's both sides, it's, so both sides became one?
All one, that's right.
Okay.
Now, to answer your question about how decisions would be made from all over the county, there are nine districts. We're district number eight, which is Indiana Borough and IUP. White Township is district number nine, and, uh, Chris Anderson is the representative there, all nine of us get one vote.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the northern people up there decide that, hey, we wanna have an ambulance in Cherry Tree, uh, and Chris and I say, well, that's crazy to have it out that far, but we could be outvoted very easily, even though we have, uh, probably seventy percent of the population.
Yeah.
So, you see, that doesn't make sense.
So, like, land can vote, you know, like, we're, we need to have, it needs to be based on population, or I don't think we should be part of this, because that's like, you can't have people, like, there's five people that live in this entire area and they get a vote, like, it's just gonna.
Well, that was my statement.
It's actually, six townships are in one district, so, it's not, the only one that's one is Indiana Borough and White Township.
Yeah, they only get one, tho- those six township gets one vote.
How do we?
Right, but it should be just based on population, like, it should be definitely.
I mean, are we senate or house of representatives, is this issue?
Right, I say, I, I, I lean to the House of Representatives, not the senate.
But you could, I want, I want you to envision.
We're gonna get bigger.
Envision the fact that, uh, when, when they could come in and be the administrative body. And from what we're seeing now, come in and take assets from our current coverage.
Is that possible?
I, I don't understand.
I'll tell you what.
I don't understand that, I don't know how Ben Reed is saying they're doing that.
That's exactly, and they just did it.
And I don't like it.
And, and think, and think in terms, so if that's the case, and we go with this, first off, White Township loses both ambulance services, both take, paid, uh, both buildings are gone to the authority. Now, the other thing that I, I worry about more than anybody else is the fact that this is only step one, because the next thing you wanna do is take over the fire departments.
And that can't happen.
It just can't happen.
Well, that's, that's literally not happening, it's not a state law.
That's right here, and closely reasonably related services there too. That is a number three of that, the Articles of Corporation, that says to me, it's more.
Overreach, and a lot of lost money.
Let me ask this question, let me ask this question, who selects the board?
Uh, the, the municipalities.
Okay, so the nine, the nine representatives.
So, we get one pick.
Yeah.
Us and IUP.
White Township, yeah, White Township got one pick.
Why is IUP? IUP should have their own, they're equal population to the entire borough.
But they're technically not a municipality.
They're not a municipality, that's.
They're not a.
Then they should not be. Have fees, though.
Okay, so, so, so long as sort of it is, we're assuming, and, and I mean, that's too strong of a word. One of the things that we're talking about tonight is that a board selected by these nine people that represent, that have been chosen to represent, select absolute corrupt morons.
I'm sorry, I don't follow you.
Well, to think, and, and I apologize, because I know that citizens is very near and dear to you, and I don't think it shouldn't be. But with Casey, and with Casey on the fact that our job is to provide EMS service, not to preserve citizens, right? At the end of the day, that is our job.
If you don't preserve it, you don't have the service.
Well, what I mean is, if the board comes in and takes over authority over citizens ambulance, we still have an ambulance service.
It just might be citizen's ambulance, and you have no control of it.
We do, through, you can, we would have more control than we do now, right now I have no say in citizens ambulance, they're a private entity.
No, that's just like the fire department, you guys have a problem.
It's.
Citizens is totally different than the fire department.
Yeah.
Citizens is a private five oh one C three.
Right, with a new board, ultimately.
But we don't have any say.
Right now is what he's saying, right now.
But you have no say, this, this governmental body has zero say in who sits on citizens.
And if we're gonna be giving them some stand-up about the money.
Right, that's what.
But they have. Favorable to have a say.
They have, you have all the rights in the world to make recommendations to say, hey, we need to have another ambulance.
Yeah.
We have the same to the authority too.
Right.
But, I understand what you're saying, Bill, and I'm not trying to argue with you, my point is, if we're talking about whether you have a legal say, the legal say is your one representative.
Right.
On that board, now, I agree that it's not.
But it's currently presented, that's what it would be.
You know, because you have six townships that maybe make up, you know, you go up north, their population is, you could add six townships, maybe even add ten, and they're not gonna have the, the population that Indiana and White Township have.
So, I guess, I guess the point is, assuming they're gonna be volunteering, for example, the nine folks could elect the board that's already there, as an example. Right, they could say, you guys don't know what you're doing, we wanna elect you to the new board, continue doing your job.
Like, with citizens, yeah, yeah.
That, that is, that is a thing that could happen, hypothetical speech.
Or they could say, we're gonna enter into a contract with citizens.
Yeah.
Citizens maintains their autonomy.
Yeah.
And we're going to have a contractual agreement with you to provide ambulance service for Indiana County.
Right.
Then we have duplication of administrative.
Maybe.
Like, that's my, like, if we're gonna have a whole nother administrative, to manage another administrative.
But the point is, if a board is selected, they then need to make that choice, we can not like it, go against it through our representative we want, but the point is, the board would have the, the authority, because we're saying that word a lot, right? But they would, it would be their choice to then contract with citizens versus some other arrangement with citizens.
Have they said at any other point that they're planning on paying our medics and ENTs more? I did hear that.
The current board is saying that.
The current board, you got it.
Current board of citizens as it is today.
Because.
Because, and, and they're on the, uh, they're, 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 they're with the, uh, skill workers union, and they have one more year on that contract, so they're working that out to up the wages going forward, yeah.
And I did, because, I did was like, what is that budget so high, and their comment to me was, they're trying to make this an, a career where people will stay, like, they.
Yeah, but six point seven million dollars.
Obviously, it's more than, it's, but.
You wanna do a ten percent bump, someone gets paid more, I'm good with that personally, but, Linker.
Look, that's also true, there, there are reasonable startup costs, I have no idea, I'm not saying it's three million dollars.
Well, and there's probably neglected, like, equipment, because they've been running out of loss.
But this is the thing we don't know, this is the thing we don't know. If it's going to be a contract with citizens.
Yeah.
To provide the service.
Or we're gonna buy citizens.
Or are they planning to try to buy the assets and personnel of citizens?
Takeover.
Right.
Do a takeover.
They'll, it won't, they won't buy it, they'll take it, they'll take it.
Right.
And then you're good.
How much of citizens data are they using to come up with these numbers, right? Because you guys do a membership drive, and it covers, what, fifteen percent of the county, covers, like, how much percentage of your budget, right?
Mm-hmm.
At that same rate, how many participants of the residents would it take to clear your budget, like?
Yeah, that's a good question, because right now, it worked fifteen percent of.
Right, and you have a shortfall, so what percentage would get you to, to, to even plus, you know?
Two point two million dollars, you'd be what, two-thirds of us?
Yeah.
At seventy-five dollars, you'd need more than two-thirds.
And that's all, that's all they need to get back to.
Get back to even.
But that's to get back to where they're at.
This year, yeah, well, I mean.
Your costs are gonna keep going up.
But it's the starting point, right, that's, that's the baseline we can, we can get from.
The other, the other, the other part of that, thinking about it, is if it's contracted with citizens ambulance, and they blow up an engine, sucks to be citizens ambulance, you have a contract to uphold, uphold, right? I mean, if I, if I contract with you a million years' long, and my lawnmower blows up, ain't your problem.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, stuff like that is gonna be negotiated in with the price of contracting.
I mean, you, hopefully you have problems.
You're gonna include maintenance and service fees, you know, with the fourteen percent contingent, so it's like, that's gonna happen.
Mayor, citizens can't negotiate a contract because they're a non, can they?
Yeah.
Like, hard, but they.
Or because they have employees.
All profits will not negotiate.
So.
Yeah, I mean.
The authority would be hiring, but they would still have somebody, citizens would still have a director, somebody running there.
And that's what Casey's saying, it could be a duplicative, uh, well, we don't know what this authority's gonna have. The authority could have an executive director, and they could have one of that person, or if they absorb it all, and then they're doing insurance billing and all that other thing, then they're gonna need significantly more people.
We should math this.
Yeah, that's why they need the six point one.
But, but I think, I think what, according to my Keith's email to, uh, Luke, it's, look, we gotta build this thing, and then we'll give you more information later.
I, I, I've seen too many people take money out of my pocket doing that bullshit, and I'm okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you shouldn't feel that way, I also think there needs to be a level of grace, for the folks that have been putting many, many, many hours into this. They've been trying to come up with the best case scenario they can, and this is what we were presented with. There has to be at least, I'm not saying we have to say yes, I'm saying we should at least be a little less hostile towards the process, right?
The cost is low compared to the consequence of, of citizens going under, or the other option is, we all just agree to give citizens money and have no oversight or no say.
They're operating through this consultancy report and this, this outline of how to, how to do the business and how to do the growth, and we've never been privy to that information. So, we are operating at a disadvantage in this negotiation, and I don't appreciate it.
Well, you have been included in all the meetings.
Well said.
So, we have had representation.
Yeah, we've had.
Like, I feel like this vote should just be, hey, we're still interested and we're still on board, let's continue, not, this is what we're doing. Correct, yeah. We're not there yet, like, can we just?
Correct, table.
Vote to continue to pursue this option.
Yes.
Well, at the, at the end of the day, and the way I read the agenda, is that we, as a municipality, would have our own individual chance.
Yes, you do.
To talk.
Yes.
And vote.
You do.
As, as, so the Indiana Borough would be the only one at that moment.
At that moment, you will be, they will call you up individually, alphabetically. So, they'll do all the public comment and all that stuff jointly.
Each of us as members, whatever.
No, 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 well, you could, yes, you can, during the public comment, you can comment. Then, they will call after that, then they are going to bring each municipality up individually, and say, okay, Indiana Borough, here you go, and then you deliver it. They'll do the roll call, they'll do the, all the stuff at the beginning, for everybody, alphabetically, so that your meeting isn't in session. Public comment, it counts for your public comment, they're not gonna do individual public comment for each group.
Right.
Um, and I think they're gonna give two or three minutes, I forget what it says.
Three, three minutes.
Yeah, I think it's three.
So, it's public con, is there, are there questions, and then what'd be provided?
They are going to give a presentation, then I believe there's public comment, then after the public comment, they go to each individual municipality to, do we have a motion to pass this ordinance?
And then there would be a motion, second, third, no, no, yeah, then discussion.
Go ahead.
But they may not get a motion.
Right.
Everybody may say, who, not, we're not ready.
Right.
Like, you don't, you don't.
You're not under any obligation to say yes or no.
We'd like to see you guys flush it out, you know, like, as an org chart, and to protect.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, to the point, the county's gonna call it quits, because they're, they're, they're paying for this consultant, so at once, eventually, Mike Keith's like, he's gonna pull the plug, and they're done, so the county's gonna then be done.
And the point is, that you have to go by the count of thirty-three thousand. And the point is that you have to go by the count of thirty three thousand households. If everybody's in, then they can come back and say, now we know how much we're gonna charge. But all of a sudden, if you have municipalities that aren't gonna participate, now you don't have thirty three thousand households anymore. Well, and it might get to the point where it won't work.
It won't be financially sustainable because instead of a hundred dollars per property, now it's three hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars per property, whatever.
And then you still bump into more places that you have to respond to that aren't participating.
Right.
I don't.
That's the idea I don't like.
Now, technically, you do not need all thirty three thousand. Thirty three thousand and a hundred of the pieces over the shortfall by what, just a hundred million dollars?
Yeah.
And so realistically, and that doesn't count anything from the businesses.
Nursing homes and all the parts.
So we actually need far less than all of the municipalities doing this, even at that dollar amount. To make up the shortfall if the goal is only to make up the shortfall.
And that's not the goal.
I don't think that's the goal.
That's, that's not the goal.
But what above the shortfall is actually the goal?
Yeah, and why and what?
That's what we don't know.
And where's it going?
Yeah.
I think we should just bring a chart of what we know, what we don't know.
This county has repeatedly voted and endorsed like a, a, a conservative representation of smaller government, right? Like, over and over and over again, this county votes for conservative representation that is against larger government and the bureaucracy. And this is like a big one.
Yeah.
With like, that's going to be going directly into rural communities now and taking over. Assets to those communities like their volunteer fire departments, which are like heartbeats in some.
We don't, we don't know that.
We don't know that because they have opaque language in the.
Yeah, well, we also have a board that will be appointed by representatives that can say yes, like.
But if, but if the places that get the best services, which are two votes. And the places that don't, maybe don't have the departments, it would be beneficial for them to take over.
How much state does this representative board have beyond certified? The fee sets.
I mean, they, they run the entire thing, just like you run the borough.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, I plan on going on Wednesday to watch and listen and learn as much as I can to be prepared.
No, no.
No, it's, it's open, it's open. I have the time and I wanna go and listen and get as much as I can out of it and see what other municipalities are feeling.
Yeah, because at, at the end of the day.
Yeah. I mean, we could go there on Wednesday to blow it all up.
Guys, we should operate in good faith.
It is good faith, but it's public.
You know, I think you shouldn't go. I'm saying what Jonathan said.
No, well, he can go with this recorded.
Well, there is a member of the press here who's sort of everything you said.
I, I understood it was a joke.
Yeah, you didn't bet you.
Across the state, Nicholson Borough is doing the same thing.
Okay.
Um, they started in July of twenty twenty four. I knew I found that last time. Where is that? Uh, it's in Wyoming County. Wyoming? Wyoming.
Why?
It's near uh, Wolksparra.
Okay.
I wonder what their results has been.
Well, that's just the borough.
It's just the borough and it then, so, so what it says here is that. Um, there will be an ambulance EMS, EMS authority ma- meeting July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at the Factoryville Fire Hall. Um, current agenda, Clinton Township, Nicholson and Factoryville Boroughs have signed an agreement to fund the creation of an EMS authority. So it's three, it's a township and two boroughs.
Yeah, you, you want township.
We could do it. That's what I'm saying, like.
You can create your own.
That's the goal.
That was something that we decided between two of us and, and not.
You could do your own, but, but remember, but remember. If you do that, your ambulance still has to go to Omaha or still has to go to Maryland Center.
And they can be charged.
Cherry Tree, they can be charged or.
That doesn't go away no matter what happens.
Right, but I'm saying, but if we, if we don't like the authority structure. There, we can create our own authority because realistically, they're using our authority to create the.
Let's say that, let's say that happened.
Yeah.
Right? So, so in theory, we would.
I'll help you design it.
Well, so, okay, so in theory, we would do that. The only way that would be feasible is if the authority bought their own assets or contracted with citizens at that point.
What, the authority?
If we did a.
If we created our own authority.
Call it a cog.
Yeah.
Whatever you call it.
The point is, the point is, we wouldn't have a monopoly on citizens. They're too big as they stand or just eating in a burrow. That's my point.
Oh, no, it wouldn't be.
So hypothetically speaking, if we were to do that, citizens ambulance would still be in existence, which, and long as they stayed in existence. Would minimize our expense for an ambulance responding outside of power.
We would contract with them like we do now. We would just.
And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a hundred dollars in a, a household either.
Whatever it would be though, the point is.
Less than that.
The point is, as long as they survive as an entity, our costs would be in that situation.
It, because we don't need to cover, we don't need to cover them. They can still be built. The, the folks that aren't participating, they can still be built. If they don't pay it, they don't pay it. We're gonna have to go after them like.
We can encourage cash matches and.
However, if it becomes cheaper for them to join.
To join.
Than to pay. And sometimes that has to just work its way out over time and they're not all gonna agree on right now, like we've already seen. I mean, if I was in a smaller community, I would not join them.
I don't blame, I, I actually agree with you.
I, I would not. I would, I would let us White Township put the bill. Why not? And see how it works out and then join if it's successful.
I hate to say that.
I don't, I don't.
Wish I wouldn't say yes to that, but if I was a tiny little town with not a lot of money and I, they were gonna cover it. It's hard to, it's hard to argue them out of that if they don't think they have the finance. Now, so, so that, so what, what does that mean now? The options would be, in our instance, we don't pass now, and I don't. I don't know the legality of talking about whether how we would vote now. It is a public meeting, but.
This is a public meeting, but you can't take a vote now.
No.
Because you haven't heard all the information.
Well, I'm not saying it makes sense. I'm saying, sometimes you're not even supposed to take a straw before.
No, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't invite you to do that. What I'm saying, your options on Thursday night are. A, pass the motion. B, don't pass the motion. Or C, table the motion.
Table.
Okay. Remember how we weren't supposed to talk about?
So why, why did you table it?
I was. To see if we can merge a better.
You're saying, hey, we're not saying no yet. We're saying, we're still thinking about it.
Yeah, I mean, if we come in, we are.
But if you know you wanna be a no, then don't know.
Well, because.
Don't postpone it just to postpone.
You're not gonna get a good number unless they know all the municipalities are on board. So that's not gonna come about with the table.
Well, but, but it may force them to do.
More.
Give you more information.
What I guess what I'm frustrated about it is if we get all the municipalities, here's what it would look like.
How do you tell somebody else you would get?
Scenarios. They can always game out a few.
Here's the minimum, here's like. Read all of our goals. Here's the minimum to keep citizens ambulance and our service provision going for the county.
The idea.
And here's whatever extra goals, like.
We don't know, is their intention.
To take over.
To take over, or is their intention to contract with? Or some other avenue or hybrid? We don't know.
Right.
We, and you know why we don't know?
Is the board picks?
Because the board hasn't been created yet.
Yeah.
And they have to study all of those options and until they do that.
Provision of protecting.
They can't do that until they know who's in and who's out.
Okay, well then.
That's the issue.
But being who's in and who's out needs to be a less official vote as we're giving all of our, our team right now.
Well, the point is, though, this ordinance pretty much is saying that they're taking it over.
Oh, yeah.
Delegating the administration of emergency medical services within this borough to the authority. Well, uh, de- delegating it to the authority will improve the quality of life.
You're saying, what that means, Bill, Indiana Borough is giving the authority our ability to govern EMS.
Right, because we.
That doesn't mean that they're gonna take over citizens.
With grants and stuff.
That's not what that means.
Administration of emergency medical services.
Right.
Yeah.
Indiana Borough is delegating to the authority. We are saying, instead of us managing emergency medical services, we are giving that ability to the authority. Right now, you don't have, yeah, you've quasi delegated to citizens. Because they've been the only game in town for sixty years.
Years of good trust.
And I'm not saying it's, that should be, I mean, but when this whole thing, I mean, this got created, citizens got created because a couple guys got together and said. We gotta do better. And they bought an ambulance, and then they bought another one, and then they got FMC in bo- on board, and then they, you know, built this thing.
Actually, R and P Coal Company.
Yeah, R and P, but then um. FM, is it FMC or Centron, whatever the heck that, you know, was before.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were very helpful, because then they wanted to expand it down there to cover Homer City. So then that, you know, it just kind of grew organically over time.
Right.
To where we are today, which is.
The county.
Right. And citizens covers what? Seventy five percent of the county?
So, let's pause quickly. I have, I wanna, I wanna ask Jonathan a question. If, what would you want to know about any level of authority, White Township, Borough, the whole county? To make what you said, you comfortable with the thing you said you don't like. You didn't like, you felt like this was overs, overreach, big government.
Yeah.
So what?
I don't think, I. Yeah, it's too opaque at this point, right? There's not, there's, there's not any clarity, I guess, from my perspective. I'm not really seeing.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Let's play out a little, let's play out a little devil's advocate here. Let's say we, let's just say hypothetically, not officially. We, we voted no to the ordinance and we, we've declared us and White Township and whoever the heck else, we wanna make a run. And what would be any different? We would still have to have representatives, unless we literally did our own, and then we have the authority, right? No, it would still be a board then. Is it Nicole?
No, I'm shaking my head like, no, we don't wanna do that.
There, there already is a board. You'd have.
No, no, no.
You don't have them.
This borough doesn't have a board.
Right, so we would still need a board for our own authority, right?
Yes.
Okay, so no matter what happens, we would be obdellate, we as council, as White Township or whoever, would be designated someone else. To make these decisions, how much, how often, etcetera, no matter what, at any level, right?
Yeah, from within that. I mean, before the decision to even do that, I would, I would want to know, like, what's the administrative?
So either way, we have the same questions is my point.
I think we should come up with a list of things that, what we, what we want to know, what are our real sticking things and what we want to do for this?
You can't, you can't, you can't ask them. You can, you can only public comment.
Right, I'll be public comment.
But we don't respond to public comment.
Respond to you, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We, I think as a borough council, we should come up with like a list of questions. What are the things that we need to know to feel comfortable?
Okay.
And also, I don't think we should take these threats seriously of like, if we don't pass it at this meeting, it's, they're done. They're done with the consultant. I've been in government long enough, I know there are a few drafts. Okay, so we can, we can take our time on this and it's not gonna immediately fall apart and we're not gonna immediately have to make our own authority.
This is a sense of urgency and we're, we're building it while we're flying. This is a negotiation tactic. This is like Trumpia and like, we're gonna slick it in.
Okay, so hang on, so.
More solid stuff.
So. Casey, I think, had an excellent point. We should have a list of three, five, ten, of how many questions we have that we would want answers to. Okay, so, you have one in mind, Casey, to start things off? So I think that's an excellent next step.
Yeah, I think that the question I would have is, what are there, like, what are their scenarios for? Do we take, are we taking over citizens? Or are we?
What is the future of citizens?
Yeah, like.
Merging.
How do you see the structure of how this organization works out? And maybe there's multiple options, but I wanna know that they have that in mind.
And I, and I don't think that's an unfair question, but the only reason I, I wanna counter slightly is what Pam pointed out, that they, they don't exist yet.
Right.
So they could change their mind no matter what anyone says.
There's a they, we can't undecided that and let.
If you're setting a goal target of the amount of money that you need, that you have an idea of what your business structure looks like.
That is, I, that is, how much money is your target goal?
So quit.
Yeah.
Like, I'm not gonna work backwards from your price to figure out what you're gonna do here. Like, that's your burden of responsibility here, like.
How much are you looking to generate from our taxpayer?
I care more like, what are you doing with it and how is it going to be said than how much you want?
That could be the next question.
Well, that number one is how much do you want?
How much?
Number two, what are you gonna do with it?
Uh, I, I flipped that. I wanna know what you're gonna do with it before you tell me how much you're gonna want.
Yeah, what is your?
I wanna know what your impact and what your goals are. And then, I don't care, like.
Well, these are gonna be like on the heels of each other, so I don't know necessarily. We should hopefully, hopefully get the answer to both.
Well, I mean, I think maybe it'd be best to have one speaker on behalf of Borough that just asks those questions. I think a passionate one.
It's one or two of you.
Okay, now.
Over the youngest people in the room.
That is not nice at all.
Well, actually, don't even. So I think, I think another question on there.
Can I answer hers first?
Oh, yeah.
Articles of incorporation, as, as were fully set forth below, and in accordance with the act, the authority shall be permitted. To administer emergency medical services or contract with a third party to provide.
Right, yes.
At least that's an option.
Or.
So, another thing in there, I don't know how many people caught it. Another thing on there is, I didn't like mutually agreed upon future date. What does that mean?
Well.
Negotiate this future date all over again?
The goal is one, one, two, uh, twenty twenty six.
And I know they're leaving it open, but again, uh, because, you know, I gotta get, if you, if you know that that's the goal, then I guess we don't need to confirm that, but. I don't like it, how open ended that was, because that's another negotiation tactic all over again. We have to agree to start this.
Each one has the right to approve the initial fee services planning. And then, we have forty five days after the hearing, and then we have to vote on it. But we have to, we, there's a separate hearing for fees too. I understand they're doing it slowly. I just, I do think we need more.
You're talking about seven there, right? Or six?
Uh, which one? I'm on the Articles of incorporation.
Yeah, seven.
Yeah, Article seven. I took issue with that one too, because i- if you object to the fee, there is no like negotiation period. Or, or your hearing case, right? You're just done and out.
What do, what do you mean you're done and out? Who's done and out of what?
If, if you.
Nine and ten.
If you engage in the municipal objection process, right, if you object to the, to the fee setting, there's not like a period of like negotiation or. You know, discussion. It's just, you're then out of the service and you will be billed for any falls into your thing. I'm just.
And if your municipality says, we're not gonna do a hundred dollars, uh, of incident, then you're, you're backing out.
Right.
Because a hundred dollars, so then the authority goes back and says, well, now we've lost that population. We're probably gonna have to jump to a hundred and forty five.
Yeah.
Or, or they can also, in their provision in there, that they can also bill the municipality for debt incurred to the point before they.
I just, that's what it says. Snowballing on these fees.
Well, what bothers me about this hundred dollars, it's, it's, it goes back to what the hell are they trying to raise?
Yeah.
You don't need a hundred dollars from everyone. If we said fifty and then the businesses are gonna pay X, we could get to three million dollars.
For the future, yeah.
Well, you see, right now, membership is seventy five dollars a year.
Yeah.
It's sixty five dollars for Peter.
But if you were to get a hundred percent buy-in at forty dollars and then you charge every business, some dollar amount, you could still get to three million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And people wouldn't be saying no to a hundred dollars. They may be saying yes to forty.
Yeah.
It's all or nothing at a hundred dollar.
What was the public engagement process? Like, did we test the thresholds of what people would be willing to pay?
Because they can't even set the fee as a hypothetical fee.
Say at one of your meetings, nothing over a hundred. I mean, it's not said at a hundred. It said nothing over a hundred, I thought.
Oh, um.
Well, yeah, and, and actually, we were focusing in meetings are seventy five, because that's what the goal related now. And actually, this, this report actually said eighty five.
I think the board already made a somewhat of a motion or recommendation that they're not voting on anything above a hundred. So they did cap it at a hundred. It could be less, is, is my understanding. So.
I think we all know the reason that we, we didn't mean this.
I'm putting a product out there. I'm gonna know what my, like, what my marginal costs are, you know, like, I'm gonna know what the price is. I think Nicole sent her. I sent it to her, and she sent it to me.
And, and maybe they just made that estimate on, well, we know that Indiana and White Township, uh, need it. Do you know what I mean? I mean, I, I, it, it's, it's totally a question. It's totally a question. But I'm stuck on, they're not revealing, and we don't, we have, but we don't have, and it's good, it's good information, but not, not as, not good enough. The questions are great.
Yeah, and, and I, and I'm hopeful that they're going to have some more answers for you.
They hired consultants.
What, what's frustrating is that they can't set, uh, they can't set a dollar amount, but if you don't agree to the doll, this imaginary dollar amount, you're out.
You're out.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like a, a crisis, right, where there's like the mystery box, and we all go to the mystery box.
You got a pair of socks?
Yeah.
So, we can stay here being flabbergasted all night. That's not the point. We have several questions. Do we wanna write down some more questions that we wanna make sure to ask?
What do we have so far?
Okay. Um, what are we going to do with it? Like, what are we doing with money? Money plan? And then it's, what's the goal, and how are, and like, how much do we need to meet that goal?
Okay.
Right.
Um, and then.
I think another valid question is, why would we have the highest population density between White Township and the Borough, and we only get one vote?
Okay.
Thank you, each, thank you.
Uh, what's our, called districts?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're, I would say, are the districts based on population or just geographic boundaries?
And it's geographic boundaries.
I remember when I looked at the list, I thought, like, the, the, the initial prospectus that we got, right? It had the, the, everything was grouped into categories, and I thought it was actually a rather fair delegate, delegation.
Yeah, but we didn't know population, did we?
And then, well, they did consider some population, yeah. That's right, cuz we were by ourselves with Senator Township.
Or originally, in the original, we were with White Township and I U P.
Yeah.
And then White Township, I think, balked, and said, we wanna be our own.
Which they, makes total sense.
And, I'm gonna be honest, I have no idea how they'll vote tomorrow, but I think they have a lot of the same concerns you have.
Yeah.
A lot of their concerns are the businesses and the personal care. I mean, they have tons of personal care.
Yes, they do.
That Chris Anderson's like, can you imagine me giving St., like, St. Andrews a bill for a hundred and thirty-four thousand?
But it's not only that. If the goal is to cover the shortfall plus ten percent, that's two point, four something million.
But at the same token, at the same token, my single-family dwelling of four people should not pay the same as St. Andrews Village.
No.
Who has two hundred beds, or whatever they have.
Case, forgive me, why not? The St. Andrews, St. Andrews Village, when they show up, is gonna get a, there's, the resident's gonna get a bill sent to their.
How often do you think an ambulance is going to St. Andrews Village?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Most of those people.
When they charge to St. Andrews Village, they submit a bill to someone. I assume the person.
They probably go to Medicare.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. Like, that's government money, like, and it breaks down to what, like, twenty, I did the math on like a hundred and eighty dollars.
My point is, or take St. Andrews out of the mix. I have a ten-unit apartment building versus my single-family dwelling. Should that, should that parcel pay the same as a single-family dwelling? No, I don't think so.
Why is it a dollar amount per unit?
That's what they're doing.
No, that's not what I said. If you have a ten-family apartment complex, that sounds like ten families pay a hundred dollars.
Right. That's.
It's building.
And then the homeowner would pay whatever portion of this designated to a business owner.
He has to raise it, right?
And then.
It gets passed on, no different than when we did.
But it shouldn't be a significantly less dollar amount if everyone in the unit is paying a hundred dollars each. Why is the building owner then paying two hundred and fifty dollars per person?
We don't even know. We don't.
We don't know.
But that's my whole, which is why question one is, why, how much money are you trying to raise?
For residents, right. So, the, the bill, the bill for an apartment would be the same as a household, which would be wholly separate from a unit in a nursing home or a.
Sure, but, but as far as apartment complexes concerned, it's that would not, in my opinion.
Or how do you do this? What do you do with businesses that are not housing people? Do you charge them at all? So does Eaton Park or Ruby Tuesdays or Walmart, do they get a bill? And how do you do that?
Lancaster model was.
Lancaster model, uh, yeah.
It's like ten dollars per occupier employee.
What if I'm eating a burger?
And then venues, which I think, it would be hard to decide whether or not a restaurant is a venue or a, cuz you either go by seats within the restaurant, or you go by employees.
Then use more like.
Or do you go for forty?
Then you would be a K C A C type thing.
I guess we'll find out.
But residents, students, it's supposed to be fifteen dollars each.
Yeah.
But if you have, well, Philadelphia Street right now, there's a business on the street floor, and there's ten apartments above it. How do you even charge those guys?
The business gets charged a certain dollar amount based on a predetermined rate, and each apartment you change charges a family unit.
Well, okay, and then.
Several occupants.
Yeah.
Okay, it's still one apartment. It's still one house.
One unit.
So do you do it per unit? Do you do it per bed? We don't know how they're gonna do it. We don't know how they're going to do it.
And again, going back to question one, how much are you trying to raise? If you're trying to raise three million dollars, then it does not need to be a hundred dollars per household.
I, I, I'd almost feel more comfortable if they would have just been like, this is, this is what we see as a goal to maintain operations in a safe and good time way, and this is our organizational structure. We'll figure out the fee to meet that, or we can give you an estimate of what the fee, and work backwards. I'd be way more comfortable with signing this order.
And I'd be willing to bet that, I would hope that they have that. They just haven't shared. Did you send?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, how do you know? How do you know how much you need?
Yeah, like, how much data does that source from citizens to make this, to make this, like, did they look at call volumes? Like, cuz that's what I was impressed with the Lancaster example, is like, they gave a little bit of their methodology, and they showed that, like, with this, we looked at call volumes, we looked at frequency, and this is how we estimated.
Well, I know that citizens did turn that over, didn't they?
They looked at all.
There was a.
Yeah, and that's good.
And then the question becomes, okay, if we contract with citizens, what's citizens gonna say? Hey, we need X number of dollars to enter this contract.
And that would be on the board to push back. Which is no different than any thing else, right? I mean, truly.
Right.
Bill, does the, citizens have in-house training, or do they send, do they only hire people that are recertified?
Well, they do in-house training, but a lot of their classes, especially when you're going from E M T to paramedic. And right now, Citizens is working with I U P.
Right.
To get paramedic programs going, where kids would actually get credits for it, and you could actually graduate and be part of your.
Has, has this group said anything about training?
No, no, this has just been between citizens and, and.
Yeah, yes.
No, no, I'm saying. It's a question. Has the authority said anything about training? Are they looking forward to training people with this money, training people to be coming in?
I know, we're not even, I think that's like, so far down the line, cuz we're just looking at.
They should be thinking about that.
Well, there is no. It is almost eight o'clock. We have two questions, maybe a third. What other questions do we want to make sure that we ask? Does mean we can't ask more. But basically, if we're saying we want one spokesperson, I would assume I'm sitting there asking these very specific questions, and being my lovely self until they give me an answer.
I mean, if you guys wanna like email some questions.
That's fine too.
Basically, like, what's the plan for the funds? Right, right? So how much do you need to raise to meet those goals? And what, what method was used to determine districts, geography or population?
And how aggressive are they gonna be getting this from people that aren't paying?
Well, yeah.
I mean, what, do they have a plan?
And, and I would, in theory, assume they're doing collections now, and it's just, if you, you can't get blood out of the stone.
Right, but, I'm sure they thought of it. I wanna hear it.
Fifty percent of our population, they, they, it is like getting blood out of a stone, right? You have poverty levels.
Well, the only, the real, the, probably the truly frustrating part, that some of the poorest folks, they have Medicare that actually does pay, is probably the folks right above that line that have the hardest time paying.
Yeah.
They're the ones that don't have health insurance because they can't afford it, and they're too, they make too much money to get assistance with it.
Yeah.
Those are probably the folks, so, yeah. In a way, we're trying to help those folks with this, right?
Those are the ones remote.
I would pay a hundred dollars to help someone not go bankrupt over medical fees.
We have a question about Thursday. It wasn't clear to me, but we told, I called on the vote. Are we gonna do a vote like we do here?
Yeah. Yeah, roll call, though, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Casey's point was a good one. If we have, or I don't know who said it, I thought it was her. If we have any other questions, we can email.
Yeah.
You specifically?
Well, just email the council.
Okay.
G drive, like a G doc.
I'll send you guys an email, let you know how the structure of the meeting goes. Unless, Bill, you wanna do that?
We have the email. Everybody.
I know, she's gonna go to one and watch.
Yeah, but I'm saying, they send it, didn't I send that to you, Nicole, the structure of?
Right, but it's something what they say and what they do. Like, would we be able to have an opportunity to chit chat before we vote amongst ourselves?
We have a discussion period. That's on the, the agenda they set. It's just like, if right now I wanna say, I have a motion that candy canes are now the new flag of Indiana Borough. Somebody can second it. Once somebody seconds it, then we talk about it, then we vote on it. Same process, right?
But they recommend that you maybe come at six-thirty, even though it doesn't start till seven? That was one thought.
To be organized.
Probably a fair amount of cash, gonna go with a number of people. So, we're gonna, so if we are emailing general questions to the, the council, we need to make sure we're not responding and having discussion about those questions.
Not allowed to talk about. Just send the question.
Right. What's two plus two? No one answer them, right?
But I know that one.
Okay.
But I think that's, that's the sunshine way about it, right? You can send a generic question or a general specific, whatever.
Question.
Just don't talk about it, right?
Yeah.
Because then that violet sunshine and your emails could be subject to exploration.
Um, this is not, this is not related to this topic, but I was gonna send an email about, um, meetings.
I'm so sorry.
Folks, this is not related to this. You messed up. You guys wanna meet, instead of meeting at seven, need from six-thirty to nine-thirty?
Oh, yeah.
On Tuesdays? So that we can finish the meeting without rushing through everything. It gives us additional hour.
Nine-thirty?
For committee.
For committee meetings.
I feel like that could have been a little softer, but.
Six-thirty to nine.
So, the point of it, the point, the point of it is, we are not getting through what needs to be gotten through. Well, and so the point of that is, we either do not have enough time, or we are, but, but the point of those committees is to talk.
Yeah.
Right?
I know.
And so either we need to go back to, we need to rethink the total committee structure, or.
You don't need to attend committee meetings, that you are not there. Unless you want to go to a topic, you don't have to. It's not, we have that.
Yeah, we already agreed.
I already agreed on that.
And so. Beginning of the year.
That wasn't my takeaway. It was not my takeaway. No.
Which we should hear.
It was really not my takeaway. Yeah.
We did.
Yeah. Yeah, the idea of changing the structure was that people could, could reasonably go to all the meetings without attending six, but.
Oh, yeah.
Our policy only counts when you're there for your.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly when we talked, but we definitely talked and voted to relax the.
Yes, you know, that doesn't count towards your answer.
So, going back to what, what, what Casey brought up, is if adding a half an hour to each committee, making them each an hour and a half on one night, that's still only one night with two meetings. Yes, they're longer, but there was only, we, the last committee meeting, we got there at six-thirty, left at nine-twenty. Yeah, okay.
That was absurd.
I agree.
So.
That was way, way too long.
So, what is the alternative? Not govern effectively, or we have more meetings, or? These are the three choices for lunch. And again, we don't have to totally answer this tonight.
It's just something to think about.
Yes, I, I, I would prefer to be able to communicate about the topics that we're.
Absolutely.
And, and give our engineers a fair chance to talk.
Yeah.
Yes.
The, the meetings that we had, it's that we were talking too much. I think it was that there wasn't.[1715.34]